This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, March 24th, 2021. I'd like to call this evening's city council meeting to order if we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag. And the states of America.
To the public to which it stands.
One nation, indivisible. Liberty, justice for all.
Good. Can I have the real call?
Councilmember Both?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Servini?
Present.
Councilmember Hill?
Here.
And Mayor Thornton?
Present. Thank you. Next is a consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's moved.
A second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained. Thank you. Motion carries. Our clerk, do we have any citizens' public comment this evening?
No public comments.
Okay, thank you. So next is the mayor's report. I do have one announcement for this evening. Just a reminder, really, that my next mayor's town hall will be Tuesday, April 6th, beginning at 5:30 PM. And again, that will be Tuesday, April 6th. And everyone is, of course, welcome to attend, and I hope to see lots of people there. Next, I do have a presentation that I would like to give right now. If I could please get those plaques pulled up, clerk? Okay, thank you. I wanted to express my appreciation to Sergeant Robert Scott for his 15 years of police service on the La Center Police Department, and Officer Glenn Pelco for his 14 years of police service on the La Center Police Department. Sergeant Scott submitted his letter of resignation on March 15th and has accepted a lateral police officer position with the Battleground Police Department. Officer Pelco also submitted his letter of resignation on March 15th, and he has accepted a lateral police officer position with the Camus Police Department. At this time, I'd like to read to the council their letters of resignation. First of all, this one is from Sergeant Scott. "After almost 16 years of service with the La Center Police Department, I am submitting this letter of resignation for my current position of patrol sergeant, police officer. My last day of employment will be March 28th, 2021. I have received a job offer from the Battleground Police Department for a lateral police officer, which I have accepted. This is an opportunity for me to continue my career as a police officer and gives me for future growth. I am excited to move forward and start working with the excellent staff of the Battleground I want to thank the City of La Center and the La Center Police Department for the opportunity to serve the wonderful citizens of La Center. I also want to thank the community for their constant support throughout my career. I leave with much anticipation and also with a heavy heart. I have made many friends in my time with the city, and I will never forget all of those who have made a lasting impression on me. I hope to have an opportunity to see and even work with all of you, all of them, again. And since this sign sincerely Sergeant Robert Scott." And then I'll also read the letter resignation from Officer Pelco. "After close to 15 years of serving the La Center Police Department and the community, I have accepted a lateral police officer position with the Camus Police Department. I am writing this letter to inform you of my resignation from this department, and my last day will be April 2nd, 2021. I wanted to thank the City of La Center for giving me an opportunity to work as a police officer and with this department. I could not have asked to work for a finer department. The city has been home to me for the last 15 years, and I have made many friends, not only within the department, the city, but also the community. The decision was not an easy one to make, but it was the right one for me, my career, and my family. The City of La Center and the department will always hold a special place in my heart, and it has been an honor to serve the community." And it's signed Glenn Pelco, 31521. So I just want to say that the city has accepted Sergeant Scott and Officer Pelco letters of resignation, and I want to wish them the very best in their new positions with the City of Camus and the City of Battleground. So council, you can see the plaques that they will be presented from the city, of course, because of the COVID restrictions, we're restricted on having any kind of a in-person type event, but I did want to share these letters and the plaques with the council this evening. That's all I have for my report this evening. The next on the agenda is the attorney's report. Bronson?
Good evening. I'd just like to report to you on recent development in the Washington, Healthy Washington Road to Recovery Plan. And as of Monday, two days ago, the governor announced a change in the Healthy Washington Roadmap Recovery Plan. What I'd like to do is review with you what's allowed under the new plan, what the new approach is going forward, and what the criteria is for determining what phase you will be in, and how Clark County is currently doing with respect to that criteria. So effective Monday, the limit on the capacity or occupancy of indoor spaces was increased from 25% of occupancy up to 50% of occupancy to a maximum of 400 people. So it's the lesser of 50% of occupancy or 400. But for us, I think that will mean that, at least with respect to the card rooms and restaurants, we see the capacity, the allowable capacity or occupancy doubling as of Monday. And there isn't yet a full industry-by-industry specific guidance. But what we do know at this point is that indoor spaces and the examples given, our restaurants, gym, fitness centers, movie theaters, is increased from that 25% to 50%. With respect to outdoor events, with permanent seating, that has now gone up to, or is allowed at, 25% of capacity, again, up to 400 people, so the lesser of 25% or 400. Large venues, this is outdoor venues, like, you know, Qualcomm Stadium or something like that, 25% of capacity up to 9,000. And with respect to all venues, the requirement of masks and social distancing continues. So, next slide, please. So, if you'll remember, the last governor's description of our Road to Recovery was issued January 11. And in that plan, the state was divided up into eight regions, and Southwest Washington was one region, and Clark County was combined with Cuyahoga, Collets, Clark, and Skamania to make up the Southwest Region, and the performance of the region was reviewed as those combined counties. With this new approach, as of Monday, the regional approach is no longer in effect. And as of March 22, counties will be evaluated individually. In the state is divided into large counties and smaller counties. A larger county being defined as a county with a population of over 50,000 people. The performance of the counties is going to be reviewed every three weeks on Monday, and the first review will be April 12. So what we're being reviewed in relation to is the criteria, which is the next slide. And so this is the criteria that's going to be applied under the new plan. Clark County is one of the larger counties, so every county in the state is starting off in Phase 3. And so what's allowed is what I described earlier in Phase 3. And if you look in the larger counties in the right-hand column, there's two criteria here, but there's three total. The first criteria is how many new cases per 100,000 population is occurring every 14 days? And so to stay in Phase 3, you have to have less than 200 new cases per 100,000 over a period of 14 days. The second criteria is how many new hospitals, COVID hospitalizations have occurred per 100,000 population over a period of seven days? And to stay in Phase 3, that number has to be under 5%. And then the last criteria has to do with the utilization of intensive care unit beds in a hospital, and that has to stay under 90%. So forget about the next slide. So the question is, right now, how does Clark County meet the Phase 3 criteria? The answer is, we satisfy that criteria. Again, you have to meet all three criteria to stay in Phase 3. I looked at the JIC numbers from the report that measured March 11 to March 18. So with respect to the number of new cases per 14 days, the maximum allowed to be in Phase 3 for Clark County with a population of roughly 490,000, the maximum will be 980. In the March 11 to 18 report, there were 249 cases in that week. So if you double that, Clark County would have had 498 cases over 14 days, so, you know, doing just about half of what the maximum allowable new cases is. With respect to new hospitalizations, the maximum is five per seven days per 100,000. So again, multiplying that times 4.9 for 490,000 people in Clark County, the maximum for seven days would be 25. In Clark County, in that seven-day period of March 11 to 18, had 22 new cases. So kind of getting close to the maximum allowable amount for new hospitalizations. And then with respect to the third criteria, our ICU utilization was at 78% as of March 18. So under the maximum, not by a lot, but by some. So there'll be more details that are going to be released by the governor's office on Monday, specifically breaking out that industry-specific designation of allowable occupancy. So I'll be happy when I'm no longer having to report on the new versions of our Road to Recovery Plan, but that's where we stand today. Happy to answer any questions.
Real quick, Bronson, that 78% down there on the ICU, is that, that's for just ICU being utilized at this point? That's not just COVID-related, right?
That's right. That's total ICU utilization. I'm trying to recall how much of that is COVID-related? And, you know, I'm comfortable saying it's less than a quarter of that total. Last thing I'll mention is that this new plan doesn't change the governor's proclamation on Open Public Meetings Act or Public Records Act. We're still required to have a remote component to our public meetings. The only thing that would be affected by it is potentially the amount of occupancy that would be allowed in City Hall if in-person meetings were to occur.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Bronson, thank you. Good report. Appreciate it. Any other questions for the city attorney before we move to Healthy Washington? Okay, so next are council comments. Councilmember Both?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I've got three items here. First, I would like to thank Sergeant Scott and Officer Pavelko for their years of service to the city and to our citizens. So it's very much appreciated. Second item, I want to acknowledge the La Center High School Wildcats. They won the One A Treco League Championship again this year. And I understand it's the ninth championship that they won in the last 11 years, so they're keeping that tradition going. Yesterday, Councilmember Hill and I met with the Port of Vancouver. We met with Brett Greening, who is the CEO over there at Port of Ridgefield, and with Kevin Witt, who is the Vice President of Innovation and Development. Mr. Witt's physician is a relatively new one. He was brought on not too long ago to start a new program. It's called the IT3 Discovery Center. And it's, I think we spent a couple hours with the Port of Ridgefield people. Very, very innovative program. And I just want to touch on the highlights here. The program is very involved, and I think that when we get through the pandemic and the limitations on in-person meetings, we need to have them come over, make a presentation to council members and to the citizens. It's a very ambitious program. And I believe we can do nothing but to help the Discovery Corridor in La Center and Clark County. The multiple, the main objectives of the program, and I'm just trying to summarize here, are to help companies innovate with technology and to upgrade worker skills in STEM-related areas, and to provide educational programs for related areas of schools. And the major objective is to attract what I call 21st century businesses and jobs to the Discovery Corridor and to Clark County. The IT3 program and the port are beginning to partner with various organizations here in Clark County. I won't run through the whole list, but just to kind of hit some key organizations that are partnering with them are Siemens Corporation, CREDC, McCase Lusino, someone with whom we know, City of Ridgefield, Ridgefield Public Schools, Vancouver Public Schools, and Washington State University. The initial trial program will actually begin next month in a partnership with the Ridgefield School District. It will be a limited program, but they are beginning to break ground in a sense. They plan to go into a 10,000-square-foot building sometime this year, and they hope to expand up to, I think it's about a total of 70,000 square feet, two or three years down the road. They are, as you might imagine, looking for funding. They've got some significant requests with our local legislators up in Olympia, so they're waiting to see what comes with that. They have received a small grant, a curb grant from the Department of Commerce, and that came to them last September, I believe. We also had to make a point with support that since we have property owners in La Center who are paying taxes to the Port of Ridgefield, that we need to be on that list, and we need to be getting some recognition there. And especially with regard to the school, they promised that there will be some action taken that way. One thing that Councilmember Hill and I will be doing, and we'll be sitting down with Dave Holmes, who is our school superintendent. Dave is retiring at the end of his school year, so I think it's important that he be brought up to speed on this program, and then he can pass it and pass the baton over to his successor. And we want to keep that thing, keep that going. The port is very serious in wanting to meet with us as soon as we can get away from the remote meetings. And I would tend to agree that I think an in-person meeting with, to see this presentation would be much more effective than in a remote sense. So it's been busy, a few busy days, and I think that's all I've got on my list, so thank you.
Thank you. Good report. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be very brief. I'd like to also thank Sergeant Scott and Officer Pavelko for their years of service here in La Center. Got to have the opportunity to talk to them several times, and they're great guys. Sorry to see him go, but obviously better opportunities are something everybody wants, and we have to appreciate their service. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Strobin?
Without echoing Doug and Randy's comments, I too would also like to thank both officers for their service. I wish them and their families well in the future. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Servini?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to extend my appreciation and thanks to Sergeant Scott and Officer Pavelko for their years of service. And I am excited for the next chapter ahead of them and the new opportunities that they'll have for additional growth in their career paths. I know they'll do very well for both Battleground and Camus, just as they did for us. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And finally, Councilmember Hill?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And again, I want to say the same thing there. Appreciation for Sergeant Scott and Officer Pavelko for their services to the community. I've had the opportunity to meet both of them, and they have been a great asset to our city, and I wish them the very best as they move forward. They're looking for more action, I think, and they're not getting it here in town because we're so, things are kind of quiet for the most part, and we're thankful for that. Let me just share with you just quickly, I attended the Ridgefield Port Commission meeting this afternoon, just prior to our meeting this evening. I'll just go over a couple of highlights here. They are working with a company called Petticore Broadband. They are out of Colfax, Washington. And this company is dealing with broadband and providing, developing a platform where they'll be able to sell services to various carriers in our, in the northwest, southwest area here in the, in our corridor. And that's a big thing, and there's a lot of money involved there. In fact, one of the things that was mentioned that, from the federal government, there's like $30 billion that's going to be coming out of the federal government that's going to be going towards that kind of activity. And so they're looking to work with that. This company, Petticore, is involved with almost every one of the ports within the State of Washington and have quite a background there. Another couple of just quickly things here. New car wash going into Ridgefield is going to be behind the Country Cafe that we, which I don't know if it's even open. I don't think it's open any longer, at the junction there where the Arco Station is. And that's going in and soon. Also, I think I may have mentioned before, they've got several, two large, actually, large buildings that are hoping to be completed here in the next couple of three months. Part of those buildings, as Doug indicated, will be going in and supporting this IT3 Training Center, which is pretty exciting. And then finally, just one of their things that's going on in Ridgefield, and I hadn't seen it for a long time because I hadn't been downtown, but Pioneer Street, which goes right down through town, and then you can either go right or left on Main Street. Well, previously, if you were to continue on Pioneer Past Main Street, you would run into a dead end. It didn't go anywhere. Well, now that's become an overpass over the railroad track. And that's to be finished here. They're hoping here in the next two or three months, that'll be actually open. So that'll take you across the railroad tracks and down to the boat launch and also down to the port building. So they've got a lot of things going on within the port, and as Doug kind of indicated, I'm trying to keep La Center as part of the discussion as we opportunity arrives, when they talk about port and supporting the port. Because again, as you probably all know, that our La Center Junction is part of the Port District. And so maybe we look down to the future here, we might be able to get some help from them. At least that's, we're going to pursue that, at least try to get some ideas from them, what we could do or what they could do to help us in that particular area. So I've enjoyed meeting with them, and I'll continue to keep you posted on what I find during those meetings. And I think that does it for me this evening, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Good report. So next on the agenda are staff reports. We have two staff reports this evening. The first one is a community development staff report, and Mr. Jeff Swanson will be presenting to the council.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council. Jeff Swanson, I'm your consultant working on community and economic development. And Jess, if we could go to the project map, which is on the next page, and I'll offer some brief project highlights, and then I have a bit of good news to share that I learned late this afternoon. So first off, the Lockwood Annexation, which is project number one there on the east side of town. We anticipate a city council hearing on this one on April 14th, so be watching for that one. Heritage Center Building B, there's a tenant there, Teresa's Little School, which is a conditional use, and we anticipate a conditional use permit hearing for that on April 6th. Next project is number four, Minute Management, and demolition permit was approved on March 2nd. Number five is the Shores B&amp;B, and construction of that building is nearly complete. Number eight is Heritage Country Estates. There was a boundary line adjustment application that was received for lots 101 and 102, and we anticipate a decision on that by early April. Next project is number nine, which is Highland Terrace. The contractor there has begun installation of a storm system on Pacific Highway for the half-street improvements along Pacific Highway. And the contractor will begin the sewer connection to Pacific Highway, which connects further to the south to the Riverside Estates pump station. A demolition permit was also approved on February the 17th. Holly Park Subdivision, that's project number 10. There was a variance application for setbacks and building coverage that was submitted back in February and was approved on March 12th. Number 11 is Case Place. The update to that is Nutter has paved the interior streets and the half-street improvements along Pacific Highway, and some miscellaneous utilities are currently being installed. On number 12, Riverside Estates, Phase 2 subdivision improvements were previously completed, but approval has not been given by the city. There are repairs and final items to complete before the public improvements are accepted. We're coordinating with the court-appointed receiver in order to continue completing the improvements in Phase 2 so that they can obtain plating. There are 91 units. There are ninety-one units in, in Phase One where building plans have been approved. And there are homes under construction there, of course. Sixty-seven homes in Phase One have been given occupancy. On the Phase Four Park, the review continued on March eighth for the critical areas permit and site plan review. And we're continuing to work with the receiver, the contractors, and their engineering consultant, as well as the developer of the multifamily project in Phase Three on some additional items that need to be accomplished. I can tell you what you can expect as a council on that is because of the, as you recall, last year there was an amendment to the development agreement that was proposed. And at that time, a date of July one, two thousand twenty-one was established for the park to be completed in Phase Four. And they're not going to make that date, as it turns out, because they went into the receivership process and that created some delays. So they're working on revising that date and a few other language changes. And ultimately, we'll bring before the council an additional amendment to the development agreement to memorialize that language. That'll be coming in the next couple of months. Project number sixteen, Bellicat Town Homes. They have submitted building plans for the town homes, and the plans are currently under review. Number eighteen, the City Hall project. Their revised building plans were submitted and approved by the Building Department. The plans, contract, and specifications were advertised on March sixteenth in The Columbian, and the bid package is hosted at J Two Blueprint Company for contractors to access. Bids are due on April sixth for that project. A couple others, variance code was updated. It was approved by council on March the tenth. The density code update to resolve some density conflicts. We anticipate a April twenty-eighth city council public hearing on that project. Clark Public Utilities, their Shoreline Critical Areas Programmatic Exemption was approved by the council on February twenty-fourth, and the memorandum of agreement was subsequently approved and signed. On the fee schedule, the, we anticipate a city council hearing on that project on April fourteenth, and that's for the building fees that Mr. Snell described. And now for the bit of good news. I heard late this afternoon from one of our state reps who let me know that the request, capital budget request on the House side, one point two million for the tenant improvements for City Hall and half a million dollars for improvements to the community center are included in the House version of the capital budget. So that is a, a positive. That's a substantial win for us. Of course, the Senate side, there will be some negotiating on the Senate and House versions of the capital budget, but I think it's a very positive sign that those two projects have been included. The East Fourth, Breezy Creek is likely, in my opinion, to be given great consideration in the Senate version of the capital budget. And so there's a strong likelihood that we will see funding for all three of those projects through the capital budget that's ultimately approved by both the House and the Senate. In terms of transportation projects, because we, we pitched East Fourth, Breezy Creek as both a capital and a transportation project, and it looks like that'll get funded through the capital budget. On the transportation side, we also put in for some repairs to West Tenth and Aspen from the heavy truck traffic and for some funds to begin the design engineering process for Northwest Pacific Highway from the town center out to the city limits. And those were intended to be included in a transportation package, and it doesn't look like at this point a transportation package is going to come out of this session. They're just, the parties are too far apart, both the House side and the Senate side, and of course, Republican and Democrat positions on, on, on that. Everyone agrees that they need to pass a transportation package, but how to fund it seems to be where, where their loggerheads. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Knowing that the grant going for the City Hall is, it may be go through, was there anything that was in there to help us out with our police situation and the deficiency in funds on that, along with, I think, what was the new act that was just passed by the feds? The one point nine trillion dollars, didn't they include some of that in there too? To maybe help us out that way?
Sure. So what I, what I know about the funding from the feds, and I'm sure many have seen articles from AWC, and I believe it also showed up in The Columbian. I think the city is expecting over seven hundred thousand dollars in COVID relief funds. At this point, I don't know that the parameters around how those funds are to be spent are particularly clear. So I think we're awaiting some additional guidance from the federal government on what the rules are around how those funds can be used. In terms of what we put in for, with our state legislature, we're, we're applying for capital projects, that's facilities-related, and we've applied for transportation, which are also capital projects, but they're handled under transportation policy. I'm unaware of any funding that would be available through the state that would supplement, for instance, general fund operating expenses, ongoing operating expenses, the funds that come from the state and predominantly from the federal government on transportation or other capital projects or earmarks are generally one-time, and they're capital-related types of projects.
This is Dennis.
Thanks, Jeff.
Tom, on your questionnaire, I asked, again, my friend, who is the representative from the twelfth district, Senator, Representative Gainer. Interesting, I asked him several weeks ago regarding similar question about the funding and what buckets those would be in. And I was thinking somewhat along on the same lines, but as Jeff just indicated, that's not one of the funds that, that the state will, 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 will approve you. It wouldn't approve funds that go into your general fund. They have to go into capital funds or roads and those kind of things. But I asked the same question because I'm, I'm unfamiliar with all that detail and what you can and cannot do. But he made it pretty clear that that's just one of the things that the state does not get involved with in trying to fix general fund deficiencies within the cities of the, of our state.
Yeah. Any other questions for Jeff this evening? Well, Jeff, I just want to thank you for that good news, and that truly is good news. That's pretty exciting. And I want to thank you for all your continued hard work and your, all your efforts to continue, continue to shepherd these legislative requests through the process. And I know Lloyd Halverson is also assisting us with that. And again, great job. And I'll just keep my fingers crossed, and we'll see where it ends up. But Councilmember Balf and I also, we attended a AWC workshop this morning and legislative session workshop, and we're updated on, on many of the bills. You know, everything's in, in play right now, so it's pretty hard to report as to what may or may not happen. But, you know, we're past the, more than halfway through the legislative session for this year. So we'll just see what materializes here in the next few weeks. But, well, that's exciting if we can pull that one all together. So again, thank you for your.
And, and Mayor, I hasten to add that we have excellent representation in the Eighteenth Legislative District. Senator River, Representatives Vic and Hoff have worked tirelessly for the city of La Center and the other communities that they represent. And they, they may have some tough votes that they have to take so that these projects can get funded. And so they deserve the council's support. They deserve support from the communities that they represent for taking those hard votes.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you for that as well. And yeah, they're true champions for the Eighteenth, for sure. And I did attend their town hall earlier this week. And yeah, they're, it's, it's quite the, quite the process. It's just the model work and what they have to do to get through a legislative session is incredible. So we're so fortunate to have such wonderful representation. And like I say, they're true, true champions for us, for sure. Thank you. So the other staff report we have this evening is our finance staff report. Our manager of administrative services will be presenting this evening. And I'll turn it over to you, Maria.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The February sales tax disbursement was eighty-two thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars. This is compared to thirty-nine thousand five forty-nine in two thousand twenty. And I do believe that is our highest month ever, or close to. We have revised the job description for the utility clerk position, which was reviewed and approved by the union. The new job description will be a customer service representative clerk three position, and we will be advertising to hire this position, which will be posted hopefully this week. The senior accountant Riley Barbera and I attended a one-day virtual webinar entitled "The Overview of Bars," which was a training for cash basis governments. It was presented by the Office of the Washington State Auditor. And in addition to that, I attended a training sponsored by Solverity. That is the collection company that the city uses. The training was entitled "Twenty Twenty-One Legislative and Consumer Financial Protection Bureau Updates." And then also Riley attended a training entitled "Annual Financial Reporting Webinar Series: Reporting for 2020," which was provided by MRSC. The city has signed up for a documenting program through a software company called Smarsh, which will provide the city with a mechanism for tracking text messages on city-provided cell phones. And lastly, we are in the process of meeting with the card rooms to discuss delaying the tax payments while the card rooms get up and running. And we will present the tax agreement at the next city council meeting for council approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maria. Any questions for Maria this evening?
No, thanks, Maria.
Good report. Thank you. Okay, so that actually concludes our meeting for this evening, council. The only thing we have left is if I could get a motion to adjourn.
I shall move.
No, second.
Then moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. Stay well.
Evening.